You can order. What?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're with the Zoom instructions. I think Jim is the only one on and he knows, but Jim, can you hear us okay? So what if we?
Yeah, I had to turn my mute on, but yes, I can hear you fine.
Okay, great. So if everybody can just make sure your microphone's on when you're speaking and speak into the microphone. We've had some feedback from participants that are on Zoom that it's been a challenge to hear everybody. So we could be very diligent about that. So now do introductions. We'll start with Guy. That's okay.
Guy, I should be superintendent.
Nathan Stryker, Pur Treasury seventy-three, South Clear Lake Drive.
Brent Loser, Member at Large, ninety-five, Penner Drive.
Dan Rippey, Council Member, Ward Two, One Twenty-Sixth Lake Side Court.
Molly Weber, Eight Twenty-Two, South Clear Lake Drive, Member at Large.
Bert Elliott, Council Member, Ten Fifty-Eight, South Clear Lake Drive, Ward Three.
George Shankel, One Forty-Four, Westford Lake Drive, Ward One.
Chris Hammer, Tom Martin.
Tyler Long, Zoning Administrator.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Now I will take a motion to approve the agenda. Please note the agenda that's on screen is the one that we'll be approving. There it may be a little bit different than what was in your packet if you prepared a day or so ago. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
This is George. I move that we took the agenda as presented.
Thank you. And a second?
Bert, I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries. We'll move forward with the evening's agenda. First is the approval of the minutes from the January twenty-first meeting. I'll entertain a motion unless there's corrections. I believe Nathan's made the corrections that needed to be.
This is Dan. I would make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
In a second?
George, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying ayes.
Aye.
Opposed?
Matt, let's not say nothing.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And now Nathan, it's up to you on the January February voucher register and more, please.
Yes, thank you, Ben. This voucher runs from January twenty-third through February eighteen, which is today. On the general side of this voucher, you're gonna see three payrolls. One of them is my longevity payment at the very top. Other things to note on this voucher. The very last thing you're gonna see on there is a tree trimming that was completed last week.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, just completed last week.
Yesterday.
Larry's Lock and Key also got added on at the last minute. That was a bill that was not making it to me because of an email issue. So I got that added on. On the sewer side. The only thing that really stands out were just the attorney bills and the on-call sewer service from ERI. That's the very last thing. And that was mainly Oglons. And then the other payment was for the condo lift station. So in conclusion, on the general side, I'm asking for approval for sixty-one thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and ninety-four cents on the jet, on the sewer side. Sixty-one thousand two oh two and twenty-seven cents. But the total attorney is coming in at seventeen thousand five hundred eighty-five. The total allowance I'm asking for is a hundred and forty thousand five hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-one cents. If you have any questions, I'll take those.
All right, just a comment of correction. On the top of the column, the far left column, we have twenty-twenty-four. You need to have me here. And then I would just want to throw something out, not to be discussed tonight, but for everybody to think about it. I'm looking at our fuel bills for the vehicles. If we combine police, street, and sewer, I wonder if it would be beneficial to segregate the police from the street from the sewer, so we know which each department is paying. I said, I don't want to discuss it tonight, because I put it out there. Nathan, you and I and Dan can discuss it later, but I'll let the council know, I think. That's it. Otherwise, I don't get this.
And you replied to my questions already.
And is that a motion?
I'd make that a motion.
Is that a second?
That would be second. Turned off.
Wait, right on the motion.
Yeah, let's be a little bit clearer.
George, I'll second.
I do have a question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's a question.
You can hear everybody.
The last line item, there was a condo lift station for three hundred and sixty dollars. What was that for? Which other capital?
A condo lift station. I'd have to get that bill out. Do you remember? I think that was.
I'll have to get. I don't know. I will show. It's three hundred and sixty dollars. I'm not putting it against capital. That's what flagged it in my mind. I didn't know what that was.
I'll have to get back to you after.
Okay.
I don't know what to talk about.
So could I amend the motion?
Absolutely.
To approve as as written, with the exception of the last line item entitled just reference check one number three six four two.
We have amended motion. Can I entertain a second?
George, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved. Okay, well now move on to new business. And the first item under new business is the condo pay app. And I think Dan and Guy are going to speak to this.
I'll just introduce it. This is the second pay application for parish. It represents payment for ninety percent of the project complete. I'll let Guy test to the accuracy of that. And there's one last pay app, number three, become for the remaining ten percent that will be approved following restoration. Restoration is the only activity on the scope of work. And you've inspected. You're actually using.
Yes, we are running on the refurbished lift station now.
Any questions from council? If not, I would make a motion to approve the condo payout number two as written.
This is Bert. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those hearing none, motion carries. Dan, thanks to you and Guy, I'll follow on this. They carried it. The next agenda item is UDO change twenty twenty five. Oh, yeah, hold on a minute. On the agenda.
Three oh two is the UDO change.
Yeah. Twenty twenty-three dash oh two. IOP survey requirements ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero one. So, yeah, if somebody could just.
It's the raised or removed structure.
So, yeah, the first one is the raised or removed, right?
Right.
And that's twenty twenty-three dash oh three. Right?
Oh, they were.
Okay.
Oh, I had this IOP survey.
That's nice one.
So we're doing twenty-three. Okay. So that's ordinance twenty twenty-five
Dash.
dash oh one.
So Tyler, do you want to introduce?
Yes. So this UDO change is to clarify what qualifies as a removed or raised structure. It does bring some more clear context, more clear verbiage. As you can see here. You're rather slow today.
No, that's okay.
So what this basically did, we did have some verbiage that said portion of structure that is non-performing. But we went through and cleared a lot of this up. That basically says that a structure shall be considered to have been fully or significantly removed or raised with the fifty percent or more removal of the structure is removed or raised as measured by the combined length of the perimeter walls, or twenty-five percent or more of the non-performing portion of the structure is removed or raised measured by the length of the non-performing external wall, or if any portion of the non-performing foundation is removed or replaced, was in addition.
Any questions, Bert, Tyler? And this has been approved by plan commission.
Yes, I can go right back up here to the next page. We do have the certification for that.
I just wanted, so the residents all know. And I know we have Jim on the line, too. Is there anything Guy, Dan, or Bert, you want to add as plan commission members?
Well, just a comment. I mean, the original language said significant change. And that's a pretty big you know, definition, like what the significant means. So the purpose of this bill, Hannah proposed it and we went through a lot of details, just to simply attempt to define what significant means in terms of length of wall. And you know, none of this is perfect, but it's a pretty good way of objectively determining what's there and making it.
To say that there's something objective versus being subjective is a huge help.
So that's some of the background there.
Thank you. Any other questions for Tyler or others? Okay, so what we need to do, we do not need to read the entire ordinance. What we do need to do is make a motion to introduce this by title and number. So if I can have a motion just to introduce it by title and number only.
I'll make a motion to introduce it by title and number.
And could I have a second?
George, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now what we need to do to move forward tonight is we need to have a motion for unanimous consent to consider the town of Clear Lake, Indiana ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh one and ordinance amending ordinance two zero zero nine dash zero four, the unified development ordinance of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana.
I will try it. I move that we have unanimous consent to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh one and ordinance amending ordinance twenty oh nine dash oh four, the unified development ordinance of the town of Clear Lake.
Perfect. And could I have a second?
Bert, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. So we do have unanimous consent. So we can move forward to approve this tonight. What we will need to do now is to have a motion to adopt the ordinance by number and title, and please read the number and the title. So now the motion is to adopt it.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to adopt town of Clear Lake, Indiana ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh one ordinance amending ordinance two thousand and nine dash oh four, the unified development ordinance of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana.
Perfect. And could I have a second?
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Changes are approved. So Tyler, I'll let you follow up with everybody on that one. We will now move to the next agenda item, which is another UDO change. And I think Tyler, you're going to set us up with that one as well.
Yes. So this video change twenty twenty-four dash zero two was sponsored by Bert Elliott. That is going to modify verbiage within the sections that well, sorry, and the IOP application to require a site plan provided by a registered land surveyor. And the main reason for this is requiring professional land survey as part of IOP's removes ambiguity and reduces the chance of errors in site plans with all while affecting landowners in the town. This is something that I'm actually very excited to see. Kind of, it's great protection in town, removing some of the liability from the town. There is a section in here that does spell out myself being able to waive that, but it's also on a very limited base and it has to be very well documented. So I think that does a great job of protecting the town itself and still moving things along for smaller projects. I don't know if Bert has anything else he'd like to say on that. No, that's what I said.
Dan, Guy?
I would say it also enables you to better inspect and process.
Yes, it does.
And this, too, was approved by plan commission.
Yes.
Perfect.
In addition to the ability to waive the requirement, you have the authority to require a survey, excluded in flatwork. But if you see a project where it looks like the flatwork might be compromised improperly, can you require a survey? Once you have Larry, answer us. Yes, okay.
Very good.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion or questions for the team on this one, I will accept a motion to introduce this ordinance by title and number. And I just made the motion to introduce it by title and number.
I will make a motion to introduce by title and number the town of Clear Lake, Indiana ordinance number twenty one five dash oh two and ordinance amending ordinance two thousand nine dash oh four, the unified development ordinance of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana.
We have a motion. Can I have a second?
Bert, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? That part is approved. So now we'll take a motion for unanimous consent to consider the ordinance. So if I could have a motion for unanimous consent to consider the ordinance by title and number.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to consider by unanimous consent town of Clear Lake, Indiana ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh two and ordinance amending ordinance number two oh oh nine dash oh four, the unified development ordinance of town of Clear Lake, Indiana.
And do we have a second on this?
George, I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? That portion passes. So now to, we can move forward tonight. So now we just need to take a motion to adopt the ordinance by number and title. So this is the motion to adopt what we've just gone through.
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance, town of Clear Lake, Indiana ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh two and ordinance amending ordinance two thousand nine dash oh four, the unified development ordinance of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana.
Thank you, Dan. And a second?
Bert, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all. It's a lot of steps, but at least we're not having to read everything two and three times. So thank you for your patience with us as we work through that. The next agenda item is the zoning fee schedule. And I believe Tyler, you're going to kick us off on that one?
I'm hoping if we have it. I had it in there.
Yeah, it's right. Yeah, it was in there yesterday.
And now it's gone.
And now it's gone. That's all right. Do you want to?
A little bit, do you have access to it that you can work it on the background?
I will.
I can make a motion to come back to it.
Why don't we just do that?
Yeah, I'd like to like to make a motion to alter the agenda. Moving past seven B and returning our council reports.
After council reports?
After council reports.
Sure. We have a motion by Dan. Can we have a second?
This is Brent. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So now we will move to Bert, the continuity of operations plan. And Tyler, I think you can, this Bert is just speaking to anyway, so don't worry about the slides, so you can work on finding.
We have it, so.
Oh, okay. Well, we kept the agenda changed, so we'll turn it over to Bert.
Okay. Yeah, so I've been talking, we've been talking about, you know, continuity of operations, which really is all about us being able to function as a town in case of a serious emergency or disaster situation. So what I want to do tonight is just a quick overview of the process for, you all have the email on the document, just kind of, there is a fairly defined process that FINA has about how, you know, entities go through this, this, and it's our intention to follow that process. And really, one of the first steps is the what, defining the scope of what type of situation do we want to, do we need to address? Obviously, you can address lots of things. Since we have nothing at this point, the idea here is let's pick the key elements, the key things that we really need to focus on. And so what I want to do tonight is simply, and I appreciate all of your feedback. And what I tried to do is sort of incorporate that into a sort of a summary, which I'll show in a second. But essentially, what we're trying to do here is, you know, identify what our essential functions are. And that's, that's what I was asking about. And then we're going to go through a whole process. And my thought process there, which is sort of the second part of the discussion, just not that we will resolve that, but that gets into the how, right? And I'm thinking that's probably a couple of small sub-teams that we can work on, the individual key essential functions, if I use my language correctly there. So if you go to scroll down, oh, you're not scrolling. If you would, there really came to be four elements that we really, I think there was real consensus around. One was wastewater treatment, which is our sewer system. Two, access to property, which really comes down to roads. You can include streetlights in there, you know, there's, but access. Three, public works, which really gets to the town maintenance buildings, that enables us to plow the roads and take care of whatever else needs to go on. So within that public work bucket, we're talking about, and this is really critical infrastructure we're really discussing, but generators, town vehicles, spare material inventory. Do we have fuel on hand? That sort of thing. And then the fourth item is government, governments and administration, which is you know, how do we make decisions in an intense situation? Who do we go to? If we can't reach someone, what's our next step? Who has a level of authority? You know, what, what level of authority should Guy who's on the scene have to make a call on something? And how should that communication be worked through? And maybe in a situation where we don't have internet and we don't have power and so on. So, so those are sort of the four buckets that kind of rose to the top. And it's my proposal, I'll stop talking for a minute, see anybody else, some other comments. It's, it's my proposal that we sort of organize around those four things and get some small teams together and start to work through it. Fortunately, in our group, we have some people that have been through this type of thing before. Chris and Tyler, especially, this is sort of new for, for us, for me specifically. But there's always this kind of logic of how deep do you really need to go? You know, we're not trying to create a hundred-page document. We're just trying to have the key things that we can grab when we need to in a situation. So, so that was one of the things that, that we, I was asking feedback on, where I'd like to go. The second piece to the, sort of the what question, before we get to the how, is the hazards, which if you can scroll down a little bit more, there's a table there. And this one, fortunately, the county did most of the work. They did pretty much all the work for us. They went through a very rigorous process of looking at all the possible kinds of things that could happen here in Steubin County. There is a report that's on TNG if you're interested in reading the
Please.
It's a hundred and fifty pages. There it is. But you can see I highlighted sort of the four things at the top, the tornadoes, the severe storms, asthma, incident, and winter storms. And, you know, those are helpful to go, all right, yeah, there's a lot of other things that are possible, but these are probably the things that we're most likely going to deal with. Not a lot of, there wasn't a lot of feedback on this, and I guess it was pretty straightforward. And the other point I'll make is that, you know, whether the road is closed because we had a winter storm or because we had a tornado, a lot of the the actions are sort of the same. So this is more helping us think through the scenarios. What we're really, you know, more organized on are, here's our critical infrastructure and here's our essential functions. So the last piece of the what, I guess there were really three, was the sort of the community lifelines, if you scroll down. Or, thank you, wrong direction. So there are also things that we want to be concerned with, that the town doesn't own. But they are lifelines. For example, having power is one. And that that's not the only one. I mean, probably one of the biggest ones is the is the town of Fremont, right? Just because our sewer system's working, if theirs isn't, well, we got an issue, right? So, so that is more about knowing who to call and then also knowing what our workarounds might be in the case that there's delays in getting that functionality. So this, hopefully what I said makes sense. I think what we're trying to do is just organize in four buckets, consider some of these things, and I'm not, I don't think we need to do tonight, figure out who's on what team or any of that. I just wanted to get people thinking and also get any feedback on either the what, well, we'll start with the what part, these, these items. And then if people have thoughts about, further thoughts about what we should organize or consider around, you know, so with that, I'll stop talking and open it up for questions or comments.
I just want to say, having been in some of the trainings with you, I think you've done a fabulous job of consolidating it and you've followed the guidance that was given to us that not be prescriptive. And I think that's the important thing, because it's real easy to get that way and add all kinds of things. So I, I think it looks really good. My only comment would be as we do the teams, if we try to use our current infrastructure on roles and responsibilities, you know, so if it's something with public safety, it's Chris and Brent, and if it's sewer, it's you and Dan and Guy, et cetera. So use, so we're not convoluted that and you're not potentially violating any open door policy by having other people involved in some of those other situations. Great job.
One of my feedbacks would be for the public works section. I don't know if it should go in there for governments and administration. We should have the Clear Lake Police Department listed in there, because we're going to need their support if there's road closures.
Yeah.
If we have a large tornado, there could be readings or things along those natures that we need to make sure is included in that. That we need to make sure is included in that. It'll be essential to protect the property. Yeah, good point.
And then it extends past their light too, you know, that's county, that's, you know, that's like Fremont Fire Department and.
Well, and if we don't have an officer, we have to call Sheriff's Department, so we know that. Yeah. Which will be part of the how that we can talk about later as a group.
Great one. Dan, Guy, Nathan, Chris?
Good job.
Yeah, I had listed, uh, my input was to have public safety as one of the top, um, but, um. It must have fallen off. Um, that would have covered your, your concern, so.
Yeah.
So whether we had four or five, whatever.
Yeah, it could be all those partners, whether, because if it's a county thing, we, I mean, all our folks work with the county, and so it'll be like, okay. That's gonna be the priority versus, depending on what the situation might be. Yeah, so may, and maybe that's something too, to talk to we about.
Or, and I don't know Chris, what your perspective is. I mean, part of what in, in this process, you know, you think about infrastructure. Which I think of things, right?
Yeah, and it's more of, that's what it actually is, things versus people. So the public safety is people versus the infrastructures, the sewer system, the roads, like. Actual items, standing waters, buildings, roads, like bridges, things of that nature.
Cause you would be part of all of it.
Yeah, you're part of all of it. So even if it's, you know, even if it's just a, you know. Any, actually, any of those, public safety could be involved in all four of those essential functions, some of them. Or whether, whether it's the fire department, police department, sheriff's office, whoever, so.
Yeah, that is, that's right. Now that you say that, I remember that from that training, because that was a key that he said, don't get the people focused on, on the thing. Cause otherwise you're adding all the employees in the council and everything. So, really good perspective. Chris, I had forgotten all that.
Cause all the things are, cause I didn't list.
Great.
Good. Anything else?
And I just wanna say, as a part of this, um, you know, Bert and I did, um, Jen has run the list of everybody that signed up for Reach. And Reach Alert. And so there have been some things that we've already identified, some former employees that we probably need to. You know, take off the list. We have new employees that aren't getting reached, that haven't signed up. And that'll be something that moving forward, but that all ties into like the communication piece, but we haven't analyzed it. Right now, we have over fifty percent of our households are signed up for Reach Alert. So that's something. That when, you know, we'll kind of read this, that communication plan, and getting people. Signed up, because we'll know who isn't, and just go have conversations with them as things start to get busy in May. Um, and yeah, great job, sort of.
Oh, yeah.
Alrighty, and so that's it, then?
That's all I have. Thanks. No, I just wanted to make sure we were all.
And now we have no unfinished business. So we'll now move to the council reports. So I think, uh, Nathan, you're up with your financial report.
Yeah, I have, uh, the fund appropriation revenue reports. While the appropriation report. Uh, kind of disregard that right now. Uh, this week I will be closing. Near twenty twenty-four or so, all my reports will all be updated. They will look a lot better, um, after this week. Uh, all balancing is complete. Uh, my annual financial report, I am just about done with that. I should have that done this week. And have that completed. You guys will all get the email copies of that. Um, Jim was out last week, so we were a little shorthanded, um, but everything. On my end is right where I would like to be. Um, so yeah, that's kind of where I'm at. Have any questions, let me know.
So will you be reissuing the January, I can't import, you know, you're done, what's the balance thing? Yeah. Okay, thanks.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and you're, you said you're closing out twenty twenty-four. Does that have any impact on the, uh, appropriations report that we got in January?
Nope.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Davis? Okay, we'll move on to Chris. Chris, it's your report next.
Uh, the month of January, we had a hundred ninety hours work, drove seven hundred and thirty-three miles, uh. One vehicle inspection, one arrest. Uh, as far as the cases, we had seven within the town, our sheriff's office had two within the town. And six within the township. Uh, with the police department in town, we had three agency assists, one harassment. Um. One citizen assist, one citizen dispute, one drug, or an accident investigation, one intimidation case. Uh, sheriff's office in town had one agency assist with us and one insecure premise. And then as far as in the township, there were two property damage crashes. Uh, one problem, and two fraud cases.
Any questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris. Hearing none, we'll move to.
Actually, do you still have it up?
Yeah.
I don't know, it, we went over it last week or not. Um, scroll to the. Oh, we got the summary. Pull the, uh, well, actually, here, that's a good example, right here, cause it's gonna go on the summary too. Uh, in the, uh, nature of continuous improvement. There are questions that get asked quite often to Chris, and we talked about it in advance, so we've added a section. That will be the violation log. And it will detail how many traffic violations we've had, how many boating violations we've had, and how many golf cart violations we've had. It'll be available on the summary, so we can look for month to month. It'll also be available on the detailed report. It actually will help Chris fill out the notes section, so he can just populate that out. Instead of having to manually type it in and everything. So, in the nature of continuous improvement, just wanted to highlight that. That we'll be seeing something a little bit different this year.
Great. Thank you very much, Brent and Chris, and the team.
Yeah, it's all the same.
So, Brent, now the fire.
Yeah, yeah, I do have to say, there's an error in that top section. It's still got information from July to August that shouldn't have entered. And I'm gonna get that replaced, but the stuff below it is correct. And I thought it was important to note. And it backs up what Chris has heard. We saw a decrease, um. For the month of January, the town of Clear Lake had a total of six incidents, including three mutual aids. And regional total was seven, because we had one within the Clear Lake Township. But, uh, like I said, to note, we saw decreases. Um, we saw the town of Clear Lake had a decrease in mutual aids in January with three in twenty-five. Compared to nine in twenty-four. The town of Clearly, uh, decreased in various calls. With six in twenty twenty-five compared to twelve in twenty twenty-four. And the town of Clear Lake was the same, however, the regional total dropped because of the drops in the. Mutual aids and the calls from Clear Lake.
Yeah, and ironically, Chris and I participated at the Fremont meeting, council meeting, and ran the air, and, and this is consistent with what's going on. Is tying in those, um, with the entire Fremont department. It's, everything's down, even as of today, they still are not where they're January. Month end usually is, so it's clearly it's down, but so are a lot of things that, you know, Chris explained a lot of, you know, what. No icy, not as many icy roads.
Haven't had as much snow, um, so you're not getting a lot of medical calls for people shoveling snow, hurting themselves, things of that nature. Yeah, man, probably. I don't know if we had any snowfalls over like maybe two inches so far this whole winter. Um, and we just now started getting some ice within the last week or so, so, because of that accidents are down. People getting hurt are down, things of that nature, so.
Yeah, so we're with the trend, so that's, but on this one, it's a good thing. Um.
But there was a trend, so didn't wanna bring it, bring it to light, it wasn't there yet, no. Um, the other portion, uh, just to go back to the police department. I just wanna make everybody aware, it's in the teams folder. We've got a twenty twenty-four versus twenty twenty-three comparison. For the department, uh, it is in there, uh, so everybody can take a look and see what the differences were between the years. And you will note that, uh, or please note that we were short-staffed for parts of the year. However, we now feel that we have the right amount of employees to offer. The coverage that we need to keep our community safe.
Thank you.
So that was in there. And then one more update on the fire department. We will see the same thing for the fire department as well. Uh, there was a misstep in the handout of the paperwork. For December, and I'm working with the Fremont, Fremont Fire Department to get that in our hands, so we can update all of our reports as well. And I'll make sure everybody gets a, gets their hands on that. Before next meeting, and we'll have the, we'll have the summary. That's.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Brent? Hearing none, we'll move on to Tyler for his zoning report.
All right. So, so far, uh, for the month of January, we had, uh, one flat work I'll be, uh, put out. And then we also finally were able to get, uh, the Schranz. Um, home addition and remodel approved, uh, since we had all the proper documentation for that. Um, next VZA meeting will be April eighth, two thousand twenty-five. And the next planning commission meeting will be May sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, planning commission, uh, we have three, uh, UDO changes. That are in ad hoc coming right now, being discussed. Uh, and then also, we have the two UDO changes tonight that you guys voted on. Uh, other than that, I know we have a couple more permits coming up prior to this month, I guess, or a couple meetings scheduled. And then also, starting this next Wednesday, um, I will be doing a three-week process. To get the flood zone administrator certification that we are required to have here at the town. And that's through the Indian Department of Natural Resources. Very good.
Thank you, Tyler. Any questions for Tyler?
So in the, uh, on the twenty open IOPs, do you have, uh, what was, did you have any in-process inspections? Have you had any?
Stuff on there, none. Um, there was one that I talked to. Yesterday, um. He's finally getting ready to, uh, move on his other half of his project. Um, I did talk to him about actually putting some more silt fence up, um, in regards to a catch basin. Um, just to kind of help protect that. And I actually really asked for a silk bag, uh, from the contractor. That's gonna be a lot more. Efficient means of protecting that line. But so far, everybody's been checking out, um. Should have a pretty poor inspection. Monday at ten AM for one houses, so we'll be checking on that, making sure they're good to go.
Excellent. Okay, thanks.
Anything else for Tyler? Okay, Guy, it's up to you on superintendent report.
Hey, I worked a total of a hundred and ninety-four and a half hours last month. Bob worked two hundred and twelve and a half. Um, in the sewer department. There we go. Um, we had eight locates, one alarm call. Um, we didn't replace any grinders, didn't repair any grinders, and we didn't set any, set any up. We have twenty-seven total grinders on hand, fifteen are still boxed, waiting to be set up. And we have zero waiting on repair. Average daily flow was twenty-nine, four eighty-five. Uh, mileage for the sewer truck was two seventy-three, and mileage for the dump truck was one thirty-seven. And as we, uh, discussed earlier, the tree trimming is finished on. Beast Clay Lake Drive, Otter Drive, Sam Point area. Um, I'm actually gonna, I believe I still have money left in that fund, so I'm gonna look into doing another section before spring possibly. Um, I actually had two other tree services reach out to me. Then we previously did not have the proper entrance that do now.
Well, that's good.
So.
That's great. Considering how long, you know, what it took for you to get the three bits, and now they're coming. I think that's wonderful progress.
Um, maybe I'll do a little truck. Uh, the new sewer truck is here. Um, we're waiting on safer weather to drive it to Kalida. Um. So the, the bed will not be in until the end of the month or the first of March. So, we still got time to get it down there, but we gotta build some makeshift stuff on it to get it there safely. Uh, set them on flaps to keep from throwing stones into the back of cab. And do weather permitting, possibly wait on the frame to keep it on the road.
I agree, to, oh, go ahead, yeah.
Oh, if it would have retained the truck.
Um, the, selling the old one. I know the last meeting, you and Nathan were gonna work on some options with that, maybe. If there was something.
I haven't done anything with that, because I don't want, I don't wanna be without a truck.
Oh, I understand.
Till we get the new one back. It's my plan to start on it then. That way we don't, you know, somebody doesn't buy a truck and then. Well, we, you can't have it until we're ready to get rid of it.
Absolutely.
So, I have talked to a few other places that are interested in it, so. Um, one, one of which is Parish Escalating, and there's a couple farms in the area that are, so.
Any questions for Guy?
Um, I did have an incident over the weekend that scared the crap out of me. I had a kid on a snowmobile, one of the little hardy cat kitty cats. Come flying out of their yard alongside his dad's pickup, which was parked right at the edge of the road. And I missed hitting that kid by about fifteen feet. I was doing about twelve to fifteen mile an hour, and. I was extremely upset. I voiced my opinion to his father, and, uh, I almost went home. Because that's way too close.
And after your conversation with them, ironically, they were then out on the lake. They realized that the, it was a bad decision to be near the road, is my guess, you know, but unfortunately, it took. The situation that you were in.
I mean, they, that, that kid sitting on that snowmobile didn't any taller than that. I'm like, you need to flag on him, you need to do something. So.
Yeah, cause your blade's that big.
Yeah, my, my blade, I mean, yeah, it was, it was not, not fun at all.
So good for you for saying something to the parents, and they may, you know, they, at least they heard what you said, and changed. Their behavior that afternoon, so.
Yeah, we all do a little bit of a thanks to Bob and Guy, cause they've been working the butts off this week. They didn't care if it was two in the morning, four in the morning, six in the morning. They were out there getting roads clear, and Bob was working. Guy was working, yeah, so, we have a little bit of, uh, debt of gratitude.
Absolutely. Anything else for Guy? Okay, now that we've completed our council reports, we will go back to the zoning fee schedule, Tyler?
Great. Let me share that on the Zoom.
There we go.
So this is revision three, um, for those who have good memories. Uh, we had, uh. Uh, two from, uh, Robert, uh, and this, uh, is the third, which addresses some of the action found that he has.
So, big thing, why do we need to increase our fees? Um, it should not be the responsibility of a whole community, uh, to incur the cost of. Uh, one property owner, um, regardless of its permit, VZA request or PC request. Um, the current fee schedule was adopted in December, uh, twenty sixteen. And in increasing costs, the town needs to review the, uh, current schedule. Um, I would say that since you guys have made it since two thousand sixteen all the way up to two thousand twenty-five, and we're almost looking at ten years. It's time to get with the times.
So we have our current IOP schedule, uh, versus what's proposed. Um, on average, it kind of works out to be about double. Um. And this was all compared against various other towns, cities with similar structures. Um, so probably the most common thing you're gonna see, uh. What would now be a three hundred dollar, uh, aisle keeper permit for kind of your average remodel is now going to be four hundred. And then signs did say the same. Um, one, there's really not a whole bunch of them that go on. Two. There's nobody that was really charging more than us. So it was all kind of in the same ballpark. Um, what we have put in here is some inspection fees. So if we have to go re-inspect, say, a pre-pour inspection, somebody had something too close. Or their envelope, or they're exceeding their envelope, we have to come back out, that'd be seventy-five dollars per trip. Um, demolitions. We will come out and inspect those every time, fifty dollars. Make sure everything is in compliance. Um, we'll get the BZA schedule. Uh, we were very, very low on that end. Um. Currently, if you want to do administrative deal, it's three hundred dollars, that will be going to nine hundred dollars. And that's going to be a flat rate, um, even if it's going to be less than a half an hour. Um, variances went up by quite, uh, a bit. But once again, this is taking a lot of time. We have to pay our BZA members, we have to pay our county officials to review them, we have to pay our legal counsel. Um, and then of course, we have to notice everyone with everything now. And I think we all agree that the mail ten years ago was a lot cheaper than it is today. Looking at the planning commission. Um. It's another one that has significantly went up. Um, but it's kind of the same thing with the BZA. We have to review it, we have to pay members to review it, we have to do a legal review. Um, and that is the justification for those significant increases. That way the town is not taking on all that financial responsibility. Um. In regards to UDO, it will only change the fee schedule. Uh, there are no other sections that will need to be amended because. Of adoption of this fee schedule if the council does choose to go forward. And then if anybody would like to go look at other municipalities and see where we pulled these from, here's a list of those towns and states. Is it?
Well done. And I think the intention tonight was just to, as Dan said, introduce it again for the third time. I, I feel like this is kind of like the golf cart. No, we're, we're just keeping it alive, um.
Which leads to a question.
Uh, but the intention is, um, that you've seen it, we've all been through the iterations of this. Is that a, a notice will be done and brought to council at the March meeting.
Comments?
Yeah.
Go for discussion.
Excellent.
Well, um, I would, I have a couple of comments, one being in the past when we have made changes that affect the builders. We've actually reached out to some of those builders to get their feedback in advance. Have we shown this proposed schedule to any of the builders that are frequently on the lake and gathered their feedback?
I can tell you for this one?
No.
But that is a good idea.
Okay, and the second, um, we, in previous revisions, we had. Robert had, so in, in every revision, we've come down in, in our pricing.
Yeah.
Uh, of the.
There were, there were some that were. Were barren.
And I was, uh, that was based on both council and, and builder feedback.
That, that's going to lead me to my next point. Is that I feel we're lucky, we live on a generational lake, but that does not always necessarily mean generational wealth. Molly has brought us this up numerous times. We have people who are on fixed incomes that live on this lake. We have people that have inherited property on this lake. And we have people who have made it on this lake from being very frugal. And I would just ask council to keep in mind all of the additional fees that we. As a town, put out to our residents and just keep that in mind when it comes to the fee schedules. Because it can mean substantial money and we have unintended consequences. When you have a certified surveyor that is now required, that also adds substantial cost to buildings, to remodels, and things along those major. So I just ask everybody to keep that in mind because we have a lot, a lot of increases. Over the last year, year and a half.
Thanks, Brent. Any other comments?
I, I have a question, uh. At least on one occasion last year, we've struggled with an IOP, uh, issued, or I guess it's several years ago, and not being complete. Is there a deadline to the timeline of an IOP?
Yes.
That said, should we have a fee that if you have to, uh. Have the, uh.
Extended.
Have it extended, should there be a, uh. Proposed fee to go and meet and have that extended? And how many extensions can you have before they have for another sentence?
Yeah, I mean, I do agree to an extent. Um, I think when I say about. The extension of an IOP is it really doesn't require any extra inspections per se. Um, but also on the same timeline, I would not want that just to be free use. And people are just getting multiple free extensions.
I'm almost thinking of it, I hate the word, but as a penalty.
Yeah.
You know, and it's like a traffic ticket or, or, I don't know, the violation, you have one, it's fifty bucks, you have second one at seventy-five, and this, this thing escalates. Where it is now financially burdening the person that's not getting their job done in a required time. What's the timeline of an IOP? One year, one year?
And I would say, though, it does take your time as it extends because you need to continue to monitor it and.
True.
Go by or guy sees something, guy's got to let you know, or Chris and his team see something, so.
I think like, so I guess what I'm getting at is it'd be nice if it was a, if we are going to move forward with the fee for that. It'd be something substantially less than the amount there. Uh, because it's not, he is spending a whole day in the office reviewing all that. I'm definitely not opposed to it, but ultimately that's council's decision.
Well, our, our mission is that they get the job done in a timely manner.
Right.
We don't want, and if that's not happening, then there should be some burden on, on them, some incentive. I agree. To step it up, so just move through thought and I, you know, if you guys want to kick it around and see if there's any merit to the covenant.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
Kick it around.
It's worth it, it's orange. Okay, I'd be, yeah, I'd be interested in knowing if the IOP period is a year. I kind of look at it more instead of a penalty as it expires.
Yes.
Now you gotta go buy a new, whatever, right?
Right.
But how, how often does it happen and what, what are the consequences? Should we just say, well, do you have?
And that's, and that's to currently there's.
No consequences.
Really no consequences. And I think that's why you have certain projects.
Okay.
That are dragging on and on and on, and that's would be a determinant to prevent that.
And I would quite assume that many times the residents would be very happy to know.
Yes, yeah.
Um, to help manage contractors.
Exactly, yeah.
I, I mean, there, there could be a positive in that too. Great, well, you guys can take that, thank you. Anything else for Tyler?
Because we'll be back with this again.
Well, yeah.
Fourth revision.
I would just say if anybody has any post-meeting comments, give them to Tyler, because he can, uh, consider them between now and March.
Yeah, I like that idea, thank you. Perfect. So that completes that portion of our agenda. We'll now move on to general discussion. So this is for council and for any of our. Audience, um, we'll start with Jim since he's online, so I don't forget him. Bruce, he did.
He does. Jim, are you still there?
Yes, I, I am still here.
I saw you had a chat question, so go ahead.
Which question?
Uh, you had a question about fraud cases, I didn't leave.
Uh, yes. Um, I was just concerned about. Uh, the, the fraud cases, are those something that, uh, you can provide more detail on later on? Is it something the general public needs to worry about, or were those specific fraud cases to individuals?
He's looking.
Uh, one, it was just the one fraud case, I'm sure. Uh, there's one fraud case out and it's a penalty of the sheriff's office handle. Uh, most of those fraud cases that we come across, whether it's clearly police fraud or even the sheriff's office. Uh, the majority of them have to do with the, or they've received some sort of a phone call, uh.
Okay.
So they don't know, or some sort of an email that they have received. Uh, and they, um, don't realize it's a scam and, uh. Um, out, they're out money, so.
Got it, okay. Thank you. I just didn't know if something was being targeted because there's so much going on today. I didn't know if it's just general or if we have to be worried if something targeted for the community.
Uh, no, just gen, they're not targeting like our community is just general all over the place, um, and they. I mean, they're fishing scams on with the internet stuff, emails and things of that nature, they've been cold calls. Um, just, you know, sometimes the, uh, people are scamming, uh, are very good at their job, and that's how they make money and. Um, they have definitely ways of, uh, talking to people to, you know, to either intimidate them or to get them to believe something, to send money.
Understand, happens all the time. Thank you.
Anybody else have, uh, audience? Kathy, John, Tyler?
Little six and get on here to compliment the street department and Bob and, uh. Other people say, well, how do you stay up there in the winter with all that snow? I said, we don't have any problem here. Our roads are clear, the county isn't clear. And we see it time and time and time again. So we just have to go out of our way to say thank you for your time, your concern. Your loyalty, and I really as a person and as a community, I hope and think we thank you a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll piggyback on that. I was driving down Ray Clear Lake the other day, back from Fremont. And the whole road was completely snow covered, you didn't see anything. As soon as he got to the Clear Lake cutoff, got a flake of snow on the road, it was perfect. Look, look at seven hundred too. Yeah, he, he, he was, our, our roads were down to the asphalt and seven hundred had only been plowed once.
John, I would echo, echo that. Thank you very much, uh, for keeping the roads clear and. Allowing us to resume a normal semblance of life in the midst of the wintertime. Thank you.
I give a false sense of security to other people that try to venture from the lake. It was, I think it was Sunday evening, I actually had to pull one of our residents out of the ditch over here on eight seventy-five. She, uh, was able to make it up our drive and started out going towards one twenty and, uh, she didn't make it.
Well, thank you for doing that. Above and beyond again, right?
Yeah, we saw the marks, wet your lips there, true.
Any other, anything from council? Okay, hearing nothing, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I so moved.
And a second?
A second, Ben.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
And I would just ask, um, Tyler, if you can get your fee standing stuff out back into the teams.
Yeah.
Do you need signatures?
Yes, there will be several that, that will. That way everything's moving on.
Oh, thank you. That was awesome, or?
No, I, I think I am. I mean, should it be me with some of it?
Maybe I, I was here and they had agreements, but I.
Yes, yes.
It's there.